To order, will you please stand for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seibert, here. Vice Chair Stevens, here. Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth? Mrs. Paul?
Here.
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mrs. Bresia?
Here.
Ms. Flynn? Ms. Breeden?
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Dr. Newman, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
Chair, I move that the School Board of City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks of the School Board of the City of Manassas, approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford?
Thank you, Chair Seibert. Good evening, everyone that's here tonight. And on behalf of the superintendent for the announcements and spotlights, I'm very honored to present a couple of staff members to you tonight. It's always great when our staff can share their gifts, talents, and expertise at local, state, and national conferences. Tonight, we want to give a shout out to two members of the MCPS family who have been tapped to present their innovative work on a broader stage, demonstrating the excellence and creativity found within our schools. So we have Mr. Jamie Simons and Ms. Katie Novinger. They're here tonight if you would come forward. Just so everybody can see you. So Mr. Simons is the librarian at Round Elementary, and Ms. Novinger is Round's Instructional Technology Training Specialist, or ITTS, as we call them. These two educators will present at the Virginia Association of School Librarians Conference held in Williamsburg, November 6th through the 8th. This year's theme for the conference is "Telling Our Story." And so these two will share their presentation on "Our Story in Code," which will focus on how they collaborate to bring coding and computer science alive in elementary school using picture books. Before they head off to the conference, though, I'd like to add that Mr. Simons will host local author Tracy Kyle on Wednesday, October 9th. She will read and discuss her book, "Pepe and the Parade: A Celebration of Hispanic Heritage." And that will be with K through 2 students at Round. So we want to thank you both for the incredible work you do in proudly representing MCPS at the conference in November. We wish you the best as you share your expertise with educators across the state. Congratulations and thank you.
That's exciting. That concludes our spotlight for tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Next up is our board committee reports. And I'll go to Vice Chair Stevens for chairing the policy committee.
We did have a policy committee meeting on the 17th, and we'll have some policies that are up as discussion agenda items a little bit later in the meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. Hollingsworth wasn't able to be with us tonight, but he does have an academics committee meeting tomorrow at 4:00 p.m. at Central Office. Okay. Moving along to citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the City of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. And I have Tammy DeHaven signed up.
Good evening, Tammy DeHaven. I'm a citizen of Manassas City and also a teacher in our schools. I don't have anything groundbreaking to say. Just pretty much a reminder, my colleagues and supervisors know me to be pretty direct and truthful. I've even been accused of being harsh, but I'm pretty passionate about our progress and our data. Everyone in front of me here has received emails and knows that I will present problems as I perceive them, usually partnered with some research that I've already done. That said, I just want to remind everybody here tonight, people watching, be careful what you post. Citizens and children are watching, and they're listening. To the extent that my mother in Pennsylvania made a comment to me on my way here, "Oh, my gosh, why would somebody post that?" The children are going to think they're terrible. And that's pretty sad to me. If you're running for public office, remember your role and the reach of your eventual power before you make promises. Some people will have the ability to make direct decisions about education, and others will not. Some people's role will be to champion and fund. As you listen to presentations from individual schools that are coming up regarding their progress, remember that key players may or may no longer be there. We are presented each year with what we have from last year. Education is a flawed system. I think we can all agree with that. And those of us in it are working really hard to improve it at the national, state, and even local level. Please don't make things more difficult by spreading or not speaking up about misinformation. Stay the course with data-driven, research-based solutions, and let's work together to be part of those solutions.
Thank you, Mr. DeHaven. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak tonight during citizens' comments? I would like to acknowledge MEA in the audience. We have President Anna DiMaria and Ms. Tammy Potts here, representing MEA. Thank you for being here. Okay. Consent agenda.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six zero. Okay, rolling along to discussion agenda. First up on accountability, school performance update from Hayden Elementary School. Dr. Laura Goldsung, principal, will provide an update on student performance at Hayden Elementary School, as well as strategies in place as part of the continuous improvement progress. And we welcome Mr. Gaffeler.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Seibert, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the School Board, and Dr. Newman. Tonight, you will hear presentations from Dr. Laura Goldsung, principal of Hayden Elementary School, and Dr. Donnie Frischkorn, principal of Mayfield Intermediate. These are our first two schools, and you will notice that they will follow the same format to highlight the work that they are doing to positively impact student achievement. Before Dr. Goldsung begins, I want to share publicly what our state superintendent wrote to Dr. Newman after his visit to the Manassas City last week. Dr. Coon said, and I quote, "Both my deputy of teaching and learning and I were incredibly impressed by our visit to Hayden Elementary School. Your literacy planning session was incredibly impressive. I really enjoyed seeing the structures that your principal has put in place to ensure teachers have the time and space to collaborate on daily instruction. This critical planning time is such an essential component of helping teachers implement new curriculum and science of reading training. Thank you for making sure your teachers are well-prepared. Moreover, your teachers showed such a deep focus on student success. That is the focus of the Virginia Literacy Act. I am sincerely impressed with the intentional focus of your educators, and I am sure the students will experience success based on their deep focus of the collective team." And so with that, we're very proud of the work that's being done at Hayden Elementary School, as we are in all of our schools. And while these comments are focused on her visit to Hayden 3rd grade CLT, you will see the same focus on students and structures at Mayfield Intermediate. Both principals are leading their schools intentionally, and our students are benefiting from their leadership and their staff's dedication to our students. And so I'd like to now turn it over to our principals, first, Dr. Goldsung.
Good evening, Chair Seibert, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, and members of the board. My name is Laura Goldsung, and I am eager to share some detailed information about the instructional program at Hayden Elementary and the strategies that we've implemented for this school year, '24-'25. Hayden Elementary is fully accredited by the VDOE, and we have no Level 3 indicators for 2024. For school year 2023, Hayden had a Level 3 indicator for chronic absenteeism. For 2024, Hayden is rated as Level 1 for chronic absenteeism because of a significant reduction in the number of students who were considered chronically absent at the end of last year. Hayden has Level 2 indicators for achievement gaps in English and in mathematics for 2024. So in the next few slides, I will review instructional strategies that are in place for all students and the evidence that we are monitoring to ensure that those strategies are effective. Additionally, I will review some specific strategies that we have employed in response to our Level 2 indicators. The improvement of foundational literacy skills is the primary goal for all students at Hayden Elementary, and the Virginia Literacy Act is shaping and reinforcing the strategies we have implemented. Central to sustaining success and improvement is the implementation of Benchmark Advance. Benchmark is the high-quality instructional resource that was adopted by Manassas City Public Schools. This resource is comprehensive, but requires sustained collaboration with grade-level teams to provide consistent instruction for all students. We are monitoring implementation through the teacher evaluation process. That includes formal and informal classroom observations and providing specific feedback to teachers regarding their instructional practices. These conversations are enhanced by active participation by administrators in the cooperative learning team, or the CLT process. When Mrs. Short and I participate in the planning process, our observations and feedback can focus on the learning goals and the expectations that were decided by the team. We are monitoring student learning and achievement data to assess the results of this work. That includes the Virginia Language and Literacy Screener. So we used to talk about PALS. Now we're going to talk about vowels. So throughout this presentation, I'll refer to that as vowels. We'll be looking at unit assessments in reading and in math. We will be looking importantly at student work samples, formative assessments, fall and winter growth assessments, and I will refer to those as VGAs, and then, of course, end-of-year SOLs. The second strategy that I'm eager to share with you is the consistent use of cooperative structures, which are designed to elicit 100% participation from all students. Cooperative structures promote oral language development, which is fundamental to strong literacy and communication skills. Additionally, students engage in problem-solving, peer feedback, and develop appropriate social skills when using cooperative learning structures. So during the CLT, teachers will make purposeful decisions about how those cooperative structures will be integrated into daily lesson instruction. The implementation of cooperative structures is monitored using the MCPS teacher evaluation process and student learning data. In addition to the data points that I already mentioned, we will carefully look and monitor our WITA access data to ensure growth in the domains of listening and speaking for our multilingual learners. The implementation of Benchmark Advance and cooperative structures requires extensive professional learning for our instructional staff. We thank this school board for revising the current school year calendar to provide time for our teachers to complete the required VDOE course addressing evidence-based literacy instruction. During our CLTs, teachers are bringing new understandings about literacy practices to the table. They are synthesizing new information and collaborating with each other about how to more effectively deliver instruction. This, in turn, positively impacts the instruction that they are providing to their students. We are increasing our collective efficacy to deliver high-quality, standards-based instruction. An important function of that group, of the CLT, is discussion driven by student performance data. And the most impactful methodology that we use is called a strategy ladder. A strategy ladder illustrates the range of student learning from foundational to and through mastery of a specific content standard. So teams work together to determine which students' work best represents mastery of the standard and which students have learning gaps. And once we understand where each student is in relation to the standard, then we determine by name the strategies that are needed to move that student or those students to and through mastery. So typically, a few students will have common misconceptions, and they can be grouped together for targeted reteaching of Tier 1 instruction. The benefit of doing this work in a collaborative learning team is that you can leverage the instructional expertise of every educator at that table. And then the next step is to engage in data-responsive, a data-responsive reteaching process, right? So we started this specific practice in spring of 2024 and will continue to put this process into action throughout the current school year for all grade levels. All of these strategies in green that I have discussed are critical to Tier 1 instruction, which is the guaranteed and viable curriculum that is provided to all students. So in addition to those strategies that I've discussed, we have made some instructional decisions in response to the needs of specific student groups. Most importantly was the development of our student-centered master schedule. So efforts were made to create classroom communities where students could share their strengths and their needs would be better supported. The master schedule ensures that all teachers are full participants in the CLT process. ESOL teachers and special education teachers have protected time to work with their grade-level partners to ensure instructional coherence across educational settings. We are analyzing student performance data carefully to affirm that students who have historically underperformed are receiving instruction based on their name and need. Some students were identified using vowels this fall, others using the Spring 24 SOL performance data for additional support in reading, and will receive interventions that are based on that level of need. And that intervention could be Lexia Core 5, which is an online computer adaptive responsive program, Ignite tutoring, which is that virtual tutoring, or it could be just additional small-group instruction with one of the content specialists in our building. Addressing the achievement gaps... Sorry, I lost my spot. Targeted Support Block is designed to meet the needs and the parameters outlined in the Virginia Literacy Act. Students, like I just said, will receive that instruction based on vowels, based on their SOL performance data, and based on classroom data. They will either be assigned Lexia learning. They could be assigned Ignite, or we will create student groups based on the data from our Strategy Ladder methodology and our data discussions. They could receive that from our reading support teachers. They could receive that from another support teacher, like an ESOL teacher or a special education teacher, or someone on the grade level who has proven to be really adept at communicating a specific standard to children. The individualized reading plans are being developed based on the requirements from the Virginia Literacy Act. Our reading support teachers have spent the week, last week and this, finalizing that list, and those plans are being placed into Power School. It's part of our comprehensive instructional plan, and also the instructional coherence that in Tier 1 instruction, students are getting grade-level access to grade-level content, and then we are closing the learning gaps during our Targeted Support Block. All right, so. Addressing achievement gaps in math continues the essential strategies that we discussed for English Language Arts, a student-centered master schedule. That requires the strategic use of human resources to maximize support in the inclusive classroom during Tier 1 instruction. We use the Stetson Model to identify appropriate accommodations and instructional strategies for students with disabilities and determine when those students will benefit most from support within the general education classroom. The Stetson Model for Inclusive Schools is a system-wide model for improving the quality and amount of time that students spend in the inclusive setting. By carefully auditing how our special education teachers and instructional assistants were scheduled, we were able to make meaningful adjustments to our special education program with the goal to improve student learning outcomes. We also use the Strategy Ladder methodology to guide our math data discussions, particularly when students complete a performance task. And that involves the application of multiple math concepts in a problem-solving activity. Student-specific remediation and reteaching is provided in small groups during our dedicated math instructional block by a math support teacher, a classroom teacher, or, like I mentioned before, other staff in response to that student learning data. That could be an ESOL teacher. It could be a special education teacher. It could be flexible grouping across the grade level. But we do that during our math block because we use a math workshop model, and that emphasizes the use of small-group instruction. And of course, we continue to review student achievement data generated by the Virginia Growth Assessments, by our CAMs, or our Cumulative Assessment Measures. Those are division-created assessments that include multiple choice. They're more like what we would consider to be a traditional math test. We also are looking at platform analytics from ST Math to monitor student learning outcomes for all students and then specific student groups because we do have those Level 2 indicators for achievement gaps. While we are encouraged by the progress that we have made, we know we still have work to do. The strategies that I've outlined this evening are the backbone of our school improvement plan, and they are the blueprint for our work ahead. I thank you for this opportunity to represent our school and our work, and we are looking forward to a really great school year.
Wonderful, thank you. And I'll ask for comments or questions from the board to my right. Mrs. Brooks?
Wow. I think you guys have really, you know, worked very hard to put into place some strategies that are very promising. I mean, that looks amazing. And we can't wait to see how it turns out, but we know it'll be good.
Mrs. Williams?
These are new, so I don't know if they're wrong or not. I'm used to looking at the button down there. I appreciate the presentation, and I know this school year with all the changes are... The changes will definitely be something that everybody's going to truly have to get used to, but I believe that we all, all the school systems, the principals, I believe everybody up here has prepared teachers for this school year. So I am looking forward to this time next year to see the progress because I believe that there will be. I do believe that the new systems and cycle that works that were implemented several years ago is the right path, and I know it will take time. So I appreciate everything that you have done, your staff has done, and it's going to really benefit our students. I probably will say this for every principal who comes up here and presents their plan for this coming up year. One thing I did notice as I was digging into the data is we are 50% EL students, and we, across the board, are above state level in our EL students. So I want to point that out because it is... That's something we do need to celebrate. So thank you for your presentation.
To my right, Mrs. Bresia?
Thank you. I also wanted to kind of piggyback on that. I did, as I was going through the presentation, you know, as it was posted to Board Docs and listening to today, it's not a... Just, I think for school presentations going forward, it might be good to have the actual data in there. You know what I mean? Because we're talking about the progress that Hayden made, but there's no... You know, we have some good charts that we could have put in there to show that consistent growth. So I think that, just going forward, that that might be nice to see, you know, more of the numbers that are in there. Can you remind me, what are the achievement gaps? The achievement gaps are measured... You can have achievement gaps within certain racial groups or within certain ethnic groups. What gaps were Hayden lacking?
I'm not going to trust my memory, even though I have them in my memory. Let me pull up my report here. So in the area of English, our achievement gaps are Level 2 for our Black students. Their rate was 70.59. And our students with disability was Level 2 at 72.22. That was our three-year average. And then in the area of math... Did I say that was math? That was reading. I'm sorry, this is math. In the area of math, our Black students, the three-year rate was 67.80, and that is a Level 2 achievement gap. And our students with disabilities, Level 2 achievement gap for our three-year rate was 68.89.
Thank you. So the way that this presentation was grouped, like the green, green. Yeah, good, green, good, yes. But it didn't sound like many of these things were so much new as it was just Plan A is more Plan A, just more...
That's correct. We're tightening up our processes of Plan A.
Just tightening, a refinement process, okay. Because that's what I was looking... That's what I was looking for, like, okay, this is a presentation about how we are... About how we're going to grow and meet our goals, and, but also how we are going to adjust some of the places where we haven't had success. And so trying to discern what was a new initiative and what was a refinement of an existing initiative was... I was having a hard time kind of following that through the...
I think it's safe to say that it's a refinement. It's truly a plan-do-study act. Let's see what we did, what worked, and let's adjust what didn't.
Okay. But the master schedule adjustments, that does sound like that was new.
Yes, yes.
So I'm excited to see that. The schedule, very important. And so the... And I did have a question in math that I asked previously, but I didn't fully... If you answered it, I didn't digest it, which is probably on me. But I know that we have Targeted Support Block, and that's for reading. But for how... Like, where in the schedule are students getting the math help? Like, do we have a Targeted Support Block as well for math?
So we have one Targeted Support Block. That's 30 minutes every day. And for most of our students, that time is prioritized for anybody who's really reading below grade level in, you know, in Language Arts, right? So that time is really protected. Again, our strategies are being guided by the Virginia Literacy Act, so there are some requirements, and that's where our students are getting that intervention. So what about math? And that could be if you aren't identified as a student who needs more intervention in the area of reading. you could be having a math group at that time. Our math block is 90 minutes for every, for all students. And during that 90 minutes, we're putting in place the math workshop model. We've had it in place, I'm going to say inconsistently, but what we do there is we have a mini lesson, right? Which is a smaller whole group lesson. We do a number talk, which is very important to develop number sense. That has during our data analyses for many years emerged as a root cause of some of our student, our low student achievement. Is a real understanding of how numbers work together. So we do a number talk with kids, we do a mini lesson and then the workshop model is divided really into three kind of small groups. That's ideal in a classroom. Sometimes if you're working with littles, you might start with two. And then a teacher can be working with the small group and kids are working independently. They might be doing a follow-on activity to that math workshop. They might be working with manipulatives of a table. Especially in kindergarten right now, we're counting and counting and counting, everything that we can. So when we have this Strategy Ladder discussion in a CLT, because our math CLTs meet on Thursday. So they bring the math data to the table. We have a Strategy Ladder discussion and they say, you know, these kids, they really just need one more to move them from here to here, right? From they've almost got it to mastery or move these kids to beyond mastery to extension. If we, if the teacher needs to pull that small group and do that little bit of Tier One reteaching, it happens during our protected time for math block because a math workshop model allows that time. Because you, that's, that's how that works. And then they can immediately go and do an instruction-dependent activity. So I'm going to work with you on learning to count by tens. And then I'm going to sit you, your little group is going to go right over here with manipulatives and you're going to practice and you're going to apply that new learning. So it's really ideal to do it during that math workshop time.
Okay, so it is, it's not a targeted support block.
It's not called TSC, but it is embedded in the instructional block.
In that 90-minute, okay, alright. Because I was, it was a little confusing to me listening. I was like, are there two targeted support blocks at Hayden? I thought they were.
No, we're just putting it in our Tier One instruction.
Alright, I think that that's all the questions I have. I do, you know, you guys have had really good year, over-year growth, so more planning.
We are looking forward to the year.
Thank you.
Mrs. Ball?
So I want to thank you. You and your staff have poured your heart and soul into what you've begun this year, what you're continuing from last year. You shared your plan for continuous improvement, literacy planning and daily instruction. So I thank you for that. I think my big question for you for tonight is what can we, this board, do to support your work going into the rest of this year and certainly the second half of next year? The second half of this year, which would be next year.
Which will be 2025.
Yes.
You can think about it if you.
No, I was about to say, no, I started by thanking you for the time, for the calendar. Because I think that the most precious resource we have for teachers and for kids is time. And we need your support in getting really good at Plan A. We need time with the resource. We need to learn the, we need to learn benchmarks. We need to synthesize the new pedagogical skills that the teachers are gaining through this amazing course that was put out by the Virginia Literacy Partnership. We need to synthesize all of that. We need to put it in practice. Then we need to come back to the table and we need to determine what worked and what didn't work. And if it didn't work, we need to figure out how to respond to that and then put it in place. So we need time for Plan A to work. And our teachers, you know, it's, it's, it's a national conversation, right? The idea of initiative fatigue, right? Is that we will adopt something and it doesn't work in the first couple of years and it's not working. And I understand why we all panic, right? Like, these are our children and we need it to work. But then we'll shift gears and we'll do something else. And then we'll shift gears and this, this yo-yo of new, new, new is exhausting. You know, I was a special education teacher for 10 years. It's exhausting to try to keep your own pedagogy current with the expectations, right? We need time and I think that that's what the Virginia Literacy Act is going to do for us. Is it's going to give us the space and the time to really get good at literacy instruction, which is what our kids need. Our kids need our teachers to be really great teachers. And we have really great teachers at our school. So how could you support us? Is to do what you're doing, provide time for us. We have the resources we need, right? We have everything that we need. We just need to support those teachers in getting really good at implementing what we've already asked them to do. That's what, that's how you could support us at Hayden.
So we know we have a good plan. We basically need to stay the course. One other question I did have. When was this benchmark, the new benchmark adopted? I mean, how, how old is that?
Okay, so the, last year?
Okay.
In Jan, so the, that's, that is, that is a whole thing. The, we got the list of the state-approved, I believe it was five, resources that we could then, they, they vetted.
I remember that.
And into all of that. So we adopted this resource shortly after the beginning of the year and ordered it and it was delivered to our schools. They started delivering at the end of May and June. So that we started the school year with our materials. And for that, and the check that you wrote for that, we are very grateful because we weren't playing catch-up. We had it when teachers reported. We had their materials so that they could engage in that professional learning. That's so important.
Thank you. We, we do want to keep the lines of communication open. If there is something you need, we want to know about it. Thank you.
Thanks. Vice Chair Stevens?
Thank you. Dr. Goldsung, first, I commend you on the master schedule and ensuring that special education teachers and ESOL teachers are able to participate in all of the CLTs because they are important members of the instructional team and their knowledge and insight can really support those general education students because so many of those ESOL strategies and special education strategies support all learners. So I really commend you on that. I think that's great. I just had a couple of questions. First of all, going from a Level Three in chronic absenteeism to a Level One, that's phenomenal. What are you doing?
Well, it's what they did, right? It's the teachers who, when a student missed, they were on the messaging platforms. They were emailing, they were calling. And I think that when you make a connection with a family and you say, "We missed your, we missed your kid today. We hope that you're feeling better. We hope," one of the other issues and, you know, it, the nature of being at school is that sometimes kids don't want to roll out of bed because they've got something happening, right? There might be a social-emotional issue. They might, they might have a friendship issue with somebody at school. So I'm going to have to shout out to the counselors, right? Because the counselors addressed those issues. We called, our family liaisons made a lot of calls to say, "What's the barrier to getting your student to school?" We have attendance officers. Marisol Lopez is at our school and when people really reached those levels where they were flirting with chronic absenteeism, you know, she, we did a lot of parent education, but this was the work of an entire school building of people. We also did some from the student level because in elementary school, absenteeism is often on the parents, right? It's often because they are the ones that control transportation when we get out because families are busy. And if they have more than one school teacher, a student in more than one school, right? That becomes an even bigger challenges for families. We tried to approach that with empathy, but we also tried to talk to our kids about why they needed to be in school, why it was important for them to be there. And so through our PBIS, our Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Program, we had some incentives. We actually did an attendance carnival on the last day of school and we gave out blue tickets. They're going to all give me a dirty look for the blue tickets, but it was super fun and, so I think it is, the answer to your question is, everybody did everything they could.
Well, you can definitely tell on that because to go from a three to a one, that's a huge jump.
It was a big jump.
And, you know, I, I think that's, I think that's a wonderful thing and I'm very glad to hear that. Quick question. When you're talking about math and you use math workshops, a lot of us think that the concept of manipulatives is playing with blocks or playing with Legos and playing. Can you explain, especially with our younger ones, why manipulatives are so important to understanding numbers? And can you explain, because a lot of people don't understand, the number system? What exactly does that mean?
If, if you could do that quickly. She's not going to do that quickly. Okay, I'm going to start with the CRA model. Concrete to representative to abstract. That's how we start to think with more complexity, really about anything, but particularly about numbers. So when we talk about concrete, we are type, so when we say manipulatives, right? Most people think of like little bears or the blocks or it's really, it's really anything that I can touch and move as I'm trying to develop that spatial reasoning, that spatial-temporal understanding about how numbers work together. Because if I can understand a number as an individual, which is, which is, that's what we're doing when we're teaching them to count, right? Kids will learn how to count by rote, but we're implementing some new research based on counting collections this year. And it's not new research. It's 40-year-old research. But it's this idea that you need to give children a variety of different sets to start to build that elasticity and flexibility of like, I can stop, right? I can count five and then I can count seven and then I can count three. And that helps to solidify this understanding. But that is why manipulatives are so important. There's research right now, they're using manipulatives in college. So you can Google that. It's good stuff. The idea of number sense. When student, when students, when people, when you and I have elasticity in our brains around thinking about numbers and how, because what is, I said this to a group of kids yesterday. I said, "When you're learning about numbers, you're learning about money and how it works, right? If you can wrap your head around a large sum of money, right? Like how much it costs to buy a house? How much is the national debt? How much is, right? Where they have, that is, that is a human skill, right? That is a, that is a portable skill that we need to have as adults. The way that we start that is having them manipulate and be able to do that. I, I mentioned it earlier in a performance task, right? If I say, you know, Chair Seberg has 10 cupcakes and Ms. Ball has five cupcakes and Dr. Newman ate seven cupcakes. Right? How many do we have left, right? Like there's an, that is, the children need to be able to create a mental model and in order to begin the process of creating a mental model, they have to have something where they can make a physical model, so.
Thank you. I mean, that was actually a very great explanation because I think a lot of people get very confused. And when they think of young children and manipulatives, they kind of think preschool, just play. And what they don't realize is that our kiddos need to actually hold, touch, feel because that's that concrete piece. So, you know, I really, from what you said, that was a very meaty presentation you gave, but it was a great presentation. I really think our kiddos are moving in the right direction and I think our Hayden students are in good hands. So thank you for what you're doing and for what everyone else at Hayden is doing.
Dr. Goldsung, I'll wrap it up and say, thank you from all of the school board. Excellent presentation, great data, great growth. And thank you for, some of your team is here tonight. And when you return to Hayden tomorrow, please give our congratulations to the entire team and all the Hayden Hawks. We're very proud of them and we're very proud of the hard work that you're doing there.
Thank you. It's our pleasure. We're looking forward to a great year. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Up next on our agenda is Mayfield Intermediate School. Dr. Donnie Fritschkorn, principal, will provide an update on student performance at Mayfield Intermediate School as well as strategies in place as part of the continuous improvement process. Dr. Fritschkorn?
Alright, thank you, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman and the school board. First, I do want to say, Dr. Goldsung, I wish I went first. Alright, so again, our presentation, one of the, one of the reasons we do go second is because at Mayfield, we are unique in the fact that we get students from all five schools and we embrace that. We have, we are building the foundation for Osborn's graduating classes. They enter fifth grade. One thing we are proud of is our continuous growth, but we are also well aware that we have areas that we need to work on and address. And the great thing that, about Manassas City is that it's continuous. We work on it every day. Some of you have been visiting schools. Well, we're working on continuous improvement plans. This week, we've been meeting with people from Central Office to discuss all the aspects from ESOL to SPED to science. I mean, that's the great thing about Manassas City in that we're all here together and again, Dr. Goldsung's a phone call away and within the division. So where we look at, we do, we do have a couple indicators in the Level Two area. One is science, which is our fifth-grade science test and can, you can look across the state. That is a difficult area for a lot of schools. Academic, and then we have achievement gaps in math, specifically for our special education students. Everywhere else, we're Level One and we're making that progress and we're moving forward. So tonight, I do want to highlight some of the reasons why we are seeing that progress at Mayfield and we will also highlight what we are doing to address some of our gap areas. First, our academic achievement in English, and this will go across the board and I will start with this, is our high-quality workforce. I will say that Mayfield is, for my seven years at Mayfield, the thing we focused on is getting the right people in our school to support our students because our students deserve the best. And I can tell you with the structures and systems and processes that we have in place, once you get the right people at the table, amazing things will happen. And that's what we're seeing here at Mayfield. So our English and, or our Language Arts and Social Studies teachers, our math teachers and science teachers, our encore teachers, everybody plays a part. Every staff member plays a part, our instructional assistants, every single person in our school is an educator. So right there, our workforce is one of the big reasons we're seeing our continuous improvement. The next one we will talk about is our schedule. Our students get a 100-minute block for Language Arts and Math. And that is especially a big thing as kids are getting older. You don't see that as often. Every day, 100 minutes of instructional time for English Language Arts and Math. And that time is used, as you know, the Virginia Literacy Act this year is asking a lot from our students and our staff and our teachers are using that 100-minute block from beginning to end. Our math teachers are incorporating math workshop, just as Dr. Goldsung said. So those 100-minute blocks are necessary and needed. And again, we worked with Central Office to develop that master schedule to ensure that our students were getting the time. Our collaborative learning teams are amazing. One of the reasons they're amazing is we have a system in place and processes, but it, because of the teachers at the table. We strategically schedule so that we have voices from every single person on our staff that have an input on the students. And then we also have our cooperative learning structures. One of the things you will notice, and you'll see this is through all the presentations and we talked about it, they will sound very similar because in Manassas City, we all have the same strategic plan that we're all focused on and we're all working on the same goals. One of the reasons our achievement gaps in English are in a green area is because of our targeted support block. Again, just like Hayden, we focused on our foundational literacy skills. If you ever come to Mayfield from 1:40 to 2:10, you will see 850 students moving and you'll see 100 staff members who are all involved in the process. We start by focusing on our students that need those foundational literacy skills. So this year, we have 350 students that will be participating in Lexia as part of the, as part of this targeted support block. And then after that, students that can receive targeted support in math and, and then also science. We also have our inclusive practices, which include our ESOL department and our special education department. They're at our CLTs. They are helping with language objectives. They're providing scaffolds within the classroom and they are helping support the schedule. And again, our CLT process, our special education teachers and our ESOL teachers are at the table with the, with the, our homeroom teachers. table with the, with the, our homeroom teachers, providing input insight that helps the students improve. Again, we saw gains in math as well. One of the areas that we focused on was our after-school tutoring program. We have algebra readiness, so we identified students that were, and again, in sixth grade, that we were concerned would struggle with the algebra test when they get to ninth grade, because that is one of the big tests in high school that you need to, in order to get your diploma. So we identified students in sixth grade that participated in algebra readiness, tutoring after-school throughout the year. Our math teachers, they participated in a book study called Building Thinking Classrooms, and we can see a direct correlation of the teachers that participated in it and their students' academic achievement. It focuses on, again, engaging students, making the students active members in the We also really focus on students placed in appropriate level math classes. Last year was the first year we provided students with Math Seven as an extension, so we had sixty-five students participate in Math Seven last year, as sixth graders. All sixty-five students passed. This year, I'm happy to report that we, we looked at that achievement, and we increased our number to seventy-nine students are participating in Math Seven this year. So, again, we are looking at the placement, we're taking input from academic achievement as well as teacher input, and we're seeing that growth. And then, we're getting regular observations and feedback with our teachers. This year, I mean, Mr. Moore, Ms. Milhone, we've already been into sixty classrooms, providing feedback towards, to teachers, and making sure that what we're talking about in our CLT is happening inside the classroom as well. And also listening to our teachers, seeing what they need extra support in, because that's our job as leaders of the school, to provide that support for teachers. And then finally, chronic absenteeism, again, just like many of the schools in our division, we saw a huge gain in our chronic absenteeism. One of the areas that we focused on was called Making Up Mayfield Moments. So this was a fluid group throughout the year, as students became chronically absent, or we started to notice them trending towards that. One of the reasons students might not go to school is because they fall behind in classes. So our Making Up Mayfield Moments, we've had, we had several teachers stay after school, and it was a time for academic support to get students caught up in the classroom, but it also provided time for students to become engaged in Mayfield. One of the signs of a vibrant school is how many students stay after school as well, when they're not running to the buses, but they want to stay there and work with the students, or work with their teachers. Mayfield, Making Up Mayfield Moments significantly helped those students improve their attendance in school while also showing them that they can achieve in the classroom. We also had absentee focus groups, which was with me, so I'd go around and meet with students, and we'd talk about what chronic absenteeism is, because as Dr. Goldsung said, elementary school, a lot of it is the parent-driven. At Mayfield, students start to see a lot more independence, and we start to teach students about their active role, and what is chronically absent, being chronically absent. And, and again, just talking about reasons why students don't come to school, and what we can do as principals and teachers to support them. And then the third thing we did was attendance transparency with our teachers. We shared every week our absenteeism rate, we shared the students that we are noticing trending towards being chronically absent, and again, it goes back to our high-quality staff, they were reaching out to their students. Our first line of defense against chronic absenteeism is students having a significant bond with their teachers. And we have teachers in our school that our kids come to school for those teachers. You can see it every morning when they come off the bus, you can see it every afternoon as we walk the bus loop, and students are saying bye to their teachers. So those are indicators that we have seen growth. We do have our gap areas that, again, some of these that you'll see up there are things that we have in place, because we've seen progress. Now what we need to do is do some fine-tuning to make sure that we are on the right path. The first one is specialized instruction, so targeted instruction related to students' IEP goals, because our gap group beginning in math, just to remind everybody, is our special education population. So our special education teachers, they're looking at IEP goals, they're meeting with their students to ensure that they are being provided the services that are in their IEP. We are also really looking at the detailed-by-question from our S.O.L. exams from last year. Ms. Milhone just shared with all our fifth-grade teachers how our students did on every single S.O.L. question this year. So when we're in our CLTs this year, and we're talking about how we're going to instruct, and we talk about what we did last year, we have hard data that we can look at and say, our students did well here, so how can we continue this? What can we tweak? We can also look and have the hard discussion, our, our students didn't do well here, so what do we have to change in order to keep, or get our students caught up? We will continue our after-school tutoring with algebra readiness. And then again, just like we said with the student detailed-by-question, we will continue our data discussions. And again, we have some amazing teachers and staff members, we have an instructional facilitator in Dr. Hudson, who really helps support our teachers and lead those discussions. Our other area for academic achievement is our science that we need to improve. Now, I will say that we did see a five percent increase on our raw pass rate from last year, so we are making that continuous improvement. But we, again, know that we have to do better, and we need to make these gains. STEM scopes, this is now our, at least, fourth year working with STEM scopes. And it's a process where our teachers are becoming more comfortable in using the STEM scopes that allows them to participate in the Five E model. We also listen to our teachers and understand that sometimes to really become engaged in these STEM scopes, we need to adjust our schedule for that day, so we talk to our teachers about ways that we can build the time longer so that they can have, so that our students can thoroughly engage with the STEM scopes process and become active in the learning. And then we also have a STEM teacher that's part of our encore rotation that works with our students and provides support in the fourth-grade material, because our students are tested in fourth and fifth-grade material. Our Common Assessments, we are continually working with our Common Assessments across the board, and this, again, this is in real time, I just got an email from Dr. Jones this afternoon, our science specialist for the division, and she said, our students, where we see them struggling is applying, analyzing, and predicting. And she gives us clear examples of where we can focus on that, and it's, again, getting kids to explore and elaborate by making claims, providing evidence, and reasoning. And those are all done through our STEM scopes program. So we have to just, again, we have Plan A in place. Now we have to tweak it and make adjustments so that we can continue to see the growth. And then, that's it.
Thank you. Questions from, or comments from the board? Mrs. Brooks.
Again, thank you for all that you've put into that presentation, and for sharing with us what you guys are doing. I did want to give a, you know, a little shout-out to your Making Up Mayfield Moments, because, you know, you're so right in that most of the reasons why students, especially when getting to the upper levels, start not wanting to go is because they've fallen behind, they don't have the time to make it up, they're, they're just, they start learning hopelessness, and then also feeling like they're a part of the community, a part of that school is also a very big part of keeping kids, you know, engaged in everything. So I really like that.
Well, thank you. And another part that I didn't mention with the Making Up Mayfield Moments, not only are we providing with the academic support to get caught up, but we're also working with them on goal-setting. They track their attendance, they set goals for their, themselves, and then as they come back, week after week, they start to see the progress that they're making, and then they also start to see it correlate with their grades.
Yeah.
So it, it was a really awesome offering that we had for our students last year.
Great. Thank you.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It was fantastic. I appreciate that you, you did mention your, your positive increase in the children who are taking seventh-grade math. My hope is to see that increase in higher-level math, beginning in like fifth grade, so I appreciate that you mentioning that, that caught my, my attention. So I appreciate that, and I know that you, you were in here when I spoke to her, I appreciate everything you, the staff has done. We, I feel like the state and everybody in this dais is really giving you guys the support to, to improve and continue growth. So I really appreciate that, and all the hard work is, is showing. Yes, we've got more work to do, but I appreciate it. And yes, I believe somebody up here said, go back and tell your school, thank you, thank you, we appreciate their hard work.
Absolutely.
Great. Ms. Bland has a question.
Oh.
Hi, Ms. Bland. That's a great question. So we do look at previous achievement on S.O.L.s as well as achievement in the classroom. We also take teacher input as well. So there's like a three-pronged approach to it, so academic achievement in the classroom, S.O.L.s, as well as teacher input. The biggest thing we want to make sure is that we're not pushing a student where they become frustrated, but what I'm most proud of is all the students that we've put in have experienced success, because we're using the right data, and then we're also giving them that confidence that they can do it, so. That one, I'm not quite sure. I'd have to get back to you. But, good question.
Mrs. Brezcha.
Thank you for the presentation. And that was a great question, Ms. Bland. So I also want to take a, I also want to zoom in on math, because there, there were some, there were some ups, but there was also a down in our, so this is where I'm missing the data in the presentation, because I'm having to do this on the school quality profile. But there was a, the grade six mathematics performance had a decrease from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four, and part of this, I imagine, is compositional, because now some of those kids are taking the Math Seven test, whereas last year, twenty-two, twenty-three, all of them took the Math Six test. But when I see that happen, I get worried about further achievement, you know, a deepening achievement gap, you know, because obviously, and I don't think you actually said this in the presentation, but the kids who took the grade seven math test, ninety-nine percent of those kids passed that test, so that is awesome, good for them, I'm, you know, very happy about that. But I do get worried about what is happening with the kids taking the regular tests, so can you talk a little bit?
Yeah. So, one of the things that we look at is the cohort growth. And what I will say is, that sixth-grade group last year, the cohort, including Math Seven and the students that took Math Six, stayed relatively the same. We're not excited about that, because, again, when we work with our teachers, every year we set our SMARTboard, and we want to see a ten percent growth from one year to the next. That's our highest-moving target, and so, we understand that. Out of the students that took the Math Six, we had a forty-four percent pass rate. That same group of students also had a forty-five percent pass rate in fifth grade. So what we, what we noticed is, we just didn't get that growth that we wanted in, in that particular group. So, again, we're looking at it, we are continuously looking for growth, so we look at our targeted support block. We have eighty-six students who failed their Math S.O.L. last year, who aren't participating in the Lexia program, because they have the foundational literacy skills. So we're already able to provide them opportunities in the targeted support block focused on that math.
Okay. I mean, I, thank you. That's good. I mean, I do think that, that when our future presentations come around for different schools, just, you know, I think it would've been good to see the, how the cohorts are going, and how would the green bullet points are feeding directly into enhancing the learning there, and how our, you know, our yellow initiatives, our new, our new initiatives are also, are going to be supporting that. Also, as I was listening to you, I had the same problem listening to you as I was listening to Dr. Goldsung, which was like, okay, what is new, and what is, like, what is brand-new, and what is just, we're trying to enhance what we were doing before? Because I, we've been offering some version of tutoring for a little while, but now it's algebra readiness.
So algebra readiness was new last year. We started working with our sixth-grade last year with the algebra readiness, and we're just, we're continuing it. That's part of a six, seven, eighth-grade process, so Metz also has algebra readiness. But, again, so we're, we're continuing that. And like you said, we have a lot of good things in place, and that's why we're continuing to see our yellows, when you said you did that last year. Yeah, we did. Now we can fine-tune it and even make it better.
Okay. So another thing out on here that struck out, stuck out to me, having special education teachers participate in the targeted support block, was that, did that happen before that, or is this, or is this new for this year?
So that happened last year as well, and, again, that, that was driven by our special education teachers coming up to the administrative team and saying, we, we need the time to work with our caseload, to make sure that they're meeting their goals, to make sure that we are touching base with them, and that they are an active part of the, their, their educational plan, and that they're getting feedback from students. So we're continuing that this year as well, because we saw a good benefit from it. And we also have, based on our academic gaps in math, we also have an area that we need to focus on that as well this year.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Ball.
Yes. I just want to, I guess, because we've gone so deep tonight, take a minute to just go back out to the thirty-thousand-foot view, and talk about, you know, my pride for how our five, six schools are so unique and important to our students. It's the beginning of a really difficult, you know, years for kids, those five, six years, and I'm spitballing, it's about two thousand four, I think, that, you know, our family started participating in deciding whether five, six was the right way to split, you know, and I think it's important that we're so unique in, in doing this, you know, ability for kids to be top dog, and isolating them on the bus from, you know, things that they may see or hear in the, of the upper grades. So, you know, with that, I just, I'm thankful for the targeted instruction, but I'm thankful for the targeted age group as well. And I want to say, you know, how proud I am, again, that we have that unique opportunity. So I will just say, you know, apropos of nothing, the STEM scopes, you know, making our kids critical thinkers as early in age as possible, you know, I mean, that, that science component translates so many places in their lives. So I, I thank you for your explanations tonight. I know the work that you're doing is not easy, but I think that we've given some opportunity in the fact that you have just five and six to really, you know, show some major gains. So I will propose to you the same question, which you can answer, you know, later or now, but if there is anything that you need from this board, I'm curious to, to know of it, now, now or later.
Well, the time is amazing, because our teachers do need that time. But the other thing I would say is, and it goes back to that high-quality workforce, whatever we can do to make Manassas City the place to be. I can guarantee you, I can get teachers to come to Mayfield and teach, but there's surrounding areas that they have to look at, but if we're on the same plane, they're going to be here in Manassas City working, and that's going to only benefit our students.
Well, we thank you for that ability, and, you know, enacting that ability. So thank you again, everyone, for your reports tonight.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. Getting used to these. Thank you for your presentation. I don't really have a whole lot of questions, because I have like an inside source, who's about eleven years old and comes home and tells me everything, but it's, it's all been very positive, there have no been, been no complaints about teachers.
I'll thank her tomorrow.
Yeah. We've gotten all good reports. Just real quick, I wanted to mention Lexia, because Dr. Goldsung mentioned it, and you mentioned it as well. That's a high-quality instructional material that was approved by the Virginia Board of Education for providing instruction to all level, levels of learners in English Language Arts and reading specifically. And it's not, sometimes people get confused, it's not necessarily strictly an online student working independently, it has components that are small-group components and components that are teacher-led components. So when students are working in Lexia, they're not- So when students are working in Lexia, they're not necessarily sitting in front of a computer by themselves. So I just wanted to make that clear because people sometimes get a little bit worried when they hear, "Oh, this is an online program. My kid's going to be sitting in front of a computer for that whole targeted math block." But it's not like that.
No.
Or that whole targeted reading, Language Arts block.
Our, our students currently are finishing the placement for their Lexia. They're, they're completing that right now during their Bobcat block. And Friday, I'm meeting with our instructional leadership team and we're finalizing the plan for our Bobcat block and what it looks like. And no, students will not just be sitting in front of a computer on Lexia or else we wouldn't have to have that meeting on Friday. But they're, each teacher's going to have a specific thing to focus on and work with. And it's going to be a fluid grouping, just like Dr. Goldsung has with her math workshop. And it's going to be based on student need and Lexia is going to help provide that support, but it's also going to let us progress monitor our students. And that's, that's a huge thing that I'm excited for, that we can show the progress that our students have made and we can show it to them as well as their parents. And that's where Lexia will definitely help.
And I think that, you know, when it, when you mentioned that progress monitoring pieces, that's added, that's an outside source, that's progress monitoring, using their independent measures. And so that can be, that's, that's like a secondary source that tells us how our students are performing. That's completely independent of the school, school division, excuse me, my tongue is getting very tired tonight. And I appreciate the work you're doing in math with the gap groups children, especially involving the special education teachers and the ESL teachers in the process and the progress and working to ensure that our students are working towards their IEP math goals and are making progress and that those goals are being adjusted, adjusted as the students make progress. Because I think those are very important pieces because those math IEP goals are designed to bring those kiddos up to grade level. And we have to focus and we have to provide them protected instruction time to work on those goal areas. So I appreciate it. So that, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Dr. Fritschkorn, I wanted to thank you for highlighting the teacher relationship and the staff relationship with the students because that is so important. And to hear you talking about how you're worried that a sixth grader might have some trouble with algebra when they're in high school, I mean, that's amazing. And that just goes to show what some of our staff is doing. I mean, we, yes, we really do care. We want you to be successful in the future. And so this is what we're doing now to help you get there. So, thank you very much for the presentation. Please return to Mayfield tomorrow and tell all those Bobcats to keep working hard, they're doing great, and please thank your staff for us as well.
I certainly will.
Thank you for being here with the Advent team. Yep. Next on our discussion agenda is policies. And I'll go to Vice Chair Stevens, who is the chair of the policy committee.
So, policy committee met, and my presentation is nowhere near as interesting, I'm just going to let you all know. Our policy committee, committee, excuse me, met September 17th. We were looking at new policy updates from the VSPA. We had a very small number of policies that were being updated this time. Usually it's in the 30s, 40s, 50s. But this time we only had six policies we needed to look at. The updates were very minor in nature. There were not any new policies being discussed. With the, with the policies that were looked at, there was a little bit of language being updated and in some cases it was as simple as changing the S in school board from a lowercase S to an uppercase S. So that's how interesting it can be. The bulk of the conversation and the discussion at the policy committee meeting was our legislative priorities. We have our legislative priorities breakfast this coming November as we do every year. And we present our priorities to our local legislators, Delegate Mononato and Senator Rome. And we periodically take the time to look at those legislative priorities and make sure that they're still the same priorities we had the year before. This year, we decided we're going to work on a major update of legislative priorities, really to focus in on the funding piece, the SOQs, funding for VLA, and then funding for the new accountability system that is coming on board as we speak right now. Those were really the big things in addition to providing free meals for our students, focus again on CTE and alternative, alternative education. We have a working draft that's in progress right now. We'll be presenting that draft at the October 8th meeting. And then at the following meeting, we'll be voting on the new legislative priorities. So look for those to come. They really still, in bulk, are the same, but they've got some updates to indicate what we need and what we want from our legislators.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
They're good updates.
Great. We look forward to that, October 8th. All right, moving on to board member comments. And I'll go first to our student representatives. First, I'll call on Ms. Bland.
I just wanted to start off with some information about our next educational trip with EF Tours. Osborne will be partnering with EF Tours to take students, staff, and their families to Europe in the summer of 2026. They will be going to Berlin, Prague, Budapest, and there's another, I don't remember, but there will be an interest meeting in the Osborne Library on October 7th from 6:30 to 7:30 PM with one of our amazing chaperones, Mrs. Megan Ball. You can click the link in your child's Class Schoolology page to register for the interest meeting. I want to say thank you to all the students, staff, and other community members that made our homecoming week so fun. This was a great last homecoming for me, so, yeah. Cheer, Osborne Cheer is having an invitational tomorrow night at Parkview High School at 6:30. So come out and support our amazing cheerleaders. And lastly, I just want to extend my congratulations to one of my friends. Her name is Emma Lindenfelzer. Today, it was announced that she was commended this year's National Merit Scholarship. I have known Emma since my freshman year and I have never not known her to go above and beyond to maximize her learning and success. She is in advanced classes, plays multiple sports, and is a member of multiple clubs and still times, still finds time to sell me Girl Scout cookies once a year, every year, like clockwork. Congratulations, Emma. You deserve this more than anyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Ms. Breeden.
I also want to congratulate Emma Lindenfelzer. I've known her since I was in Hayden with her. And going back to Hayden, as in a runway of both Hayden Elementary and Mayfield Intermediate School, I want to, I was delighted to hear about the educational success and I'm sure Dr. Goldsung and Dr. Fritschkorn both will continue improving their school environment. So thank you for that. And back to Osborne's homecoming, I want to shout out Mr. Whitley and Ms. Nelson. They put in a lot of hard work over the weekend to make it happen and I want to highlight their dedication for the students' enjoyment of the homecoming dance. Also around is holding a back-to-school night tomorrow night from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. So go and support that. And then lastly, I want to reiterate, wait, reiterate, sorry, the importance of voting. Remind your friends, family, and children who are eligible to go out and register to vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Mrs. Williams.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bland and Ms. Breeden, for your comments. Very insightful. Thank you. I'm just going to highlight a few things since I'm first and I don't have to check things off, so it's kind of nice. I wanted to just let everybody know that we did recently host the, the rally, the Rally of the Rail under the lights, which is, which is always a spirited competition with our special education students. I have attended several of those. I wasn't able to do that, that night, but it's a lot of fun. And I think those kids just really, truly enjoy it, enjoy it, as well as all the volunteers. Osborne High School, Manassas Park High School, and Forest Park High School this year attended and joined us, so that was nice. Homecoming, I really enjoyed all of the pictures. I always do. Everybody always looks so handsome and beautiful and, hey, congratulations on the win. That was fantastic Eagles. Emma, I, I want to congratulate her as well, but they both already congratulated her, so what, just what an accomplishment. We have seen Dr. Lisa Coons several times in the past couple of weeks, including today. Mrs. Seberg and I, along with Dr. Newman, attended the Community Commitment to Literacy, which was hosted by Bookworm Central. And actually, our one and only superintendent was on the panel as well. So it was nice to hear what you had to say in answering some of the panel, some of the questions as a panelist. There's been a lot of transition and I think a lot of support from the state with all the new things coming, coming up, including cell phones. It just, there's just been a lot recently. And I know it's going to take a work from not just every teacher's principles, but also parents when they see what's happening with the decision with cell phones. I think parents will be the hardest ones to transition as opposed to our, our students. But knowing that and knowing that we just need to continue to keep our sights on keeping the main thing, the main thing, which is our students. And with that, I'm done. Thank you, Mrs. Chair.
You're welcome. Dr. Newman, did you have something you wanted to mention?
Yes. Ms. Williams mentioned that Dr. Coons has been here a couple of times in the past two weeks, but one of the things she did today before we went to the event for Bookworm Central is she came to Osborne today and during her visit last week for the career and conversations, I've been saying it wrong, she noticed that our students were focused on the actual presenters and they were not on their phones. And so she's making a video about cellphone-free schools and she was so impressed with our students that she wanted to get some of them on that video. We were the first school that she had stopped by for that. And there was a star that is sitting here today that's going to be in that video. Ms. Breeden is one of the six, I believe, that were there today, or seven? Six, that were there. I didn't get all of their names. I know our drum major was there. And you want to mention the others if you?
Thomas Roberts was there. Alice Hertz was there. Tiana Vasquez was there. Savannah Fitzgerald and her brother. Julius Fitzgerald.
And, and one of the comments from Dr. Coons and Dr. Cooper was that all of them talked about their connection with the school and it's the family feel that they had. And they were enjoying spending more time speaking to their classmates and their teachers and not having the distraction of the phone in the classroom. I know we have new roles coming, which is what we're going to discuss tomorrow during the academic meeting. I know that the academic team is looking to host some town hall-type events to go over the new cellphone policies and we're looking forward to that. I had the opportunity to talk to, he's always going to be my chief keen, the interim city manager chief keen. We talked about the importance of having a officer there. So when we have those meetings, oh my, why am I drawing a blank? He's OHS, his wife is PE at Hayden. Why am I drawing a blank with his name? Hyde, Marcus Hyde will be that person once we set the dates to talk about the reason that we don't want 2,300 Osborne parents calling their child's cellphone during, during an emergency. So we're going to partner with them. We've always had a great relationship with our PD and so I'm happy to say that they will be a part of our town hall or whatever we're going to call it sessions going forward. So, but really, I just wanted to say, Dr. Coons videoed our kids today and, but we're going to do some, some things about the cellphone policy going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Mrs. Brooks.
Yes. Thank you. I would like to share with you all tonight about what happened today. I am part of a group. It's called Gratitude Ladies. And we, you know, get together once a quarter, we, you know, each pitch in a little and then decide who's going to receive the funds that we collect. And we chose the Kuma Foundation. And what the Kuma Foundation, if you're not completely familiar, has, you know, started a STEM lab at Georgetown South. And they wanted to have a couple of teachers, interns from Osborne High School, you know, who wanted to, you know, pursue that as their CTE requirements. So they hired two, two students and the funds, $4,600, is going to go to pay those teachers. So, so I just wanted to share that with you guys, you know, the community coming together to support our kids. So, thank, that's all.
That's awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mrs. Breja.
Thank you very much. I was actually going to also myself mention the Cellphone Information Night that was coming up, but, so, I'll put a punctuation mark at the end of that because I have been hearing from some people who have thoughts about it and we are going to have a, a venue and an opportunity for you as community members to ask those questions and for us as a school division to give you the, the plan and hopefully assuage any anxiety that might be out there. I will add as a supportive anecdote, recently, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, Baldwin Elementary had, the building Baldwin had a false alarm, fire alarm during the rain, unfortunately, so all of the kids had to evacuate and stand on the blacktop while it was pouring rain and they had to clear the building, all this stuff. But a lot of our kids took the opportunity, those who had cellphones, "Hey, Mom, come pick me up, there's something going on," and it added a layer of confusion. There was never any emergency, that was just not, not necessary. So I know that culturally, we are very attached to our cellphones, absolutely. I know exactly where mine is at all times, you know? This is, us as adults as well have become very attuned to them. But I just ask that we go into this cellphone process with an open mind and there will be more to come. So that's all from me. Thank you.
Mrs. Ball?
Hi. I want to make sure I'm, I tell everyone, I do try to push out really great information on Facebook and when the election's over, I'll stop talking about it promptly. But piling on with, you know, some of Misty Havens, sort of cautionary tales and Ms. Breeden's urgents just to vote in general, I would like to say that the election pattern of sowing discontent and making schools seem like they're irredeemably flawed must be recognized for what it is by the citizens of Manassas. The rally cry to increase academic excellence is a general idea that lacks specificity. What you have heard tonight is hard, concrete data about real change that is taking place inside the walls of our schools on a daily basis by our employees who we respect and value as the change agents that they are. As you head to the polls this election season, please consider whether you're prepared to disrupt the momentum that we've worked so hard, very hard, to create for the idea of outcomes that are somehow faster or more magical. I assure you that if there were an easier way to affect the change we need, we would have done it already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ball. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. I wanted to mention, last Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the Regional Public School Leaders Network Luncheon in place of Chair Seberg with Dr. Stevenson, who was taking the place, I believe, of Dr. Newman. It was an opportunity for superintendents in the area and school board members and executive staff of different school divisions in the area to get together and discuss certain hot topics. And the issue or the topic that was being discussed last, at last Friday's luncheon was the new accountability system. If you haven't heard about it, the documents are available on the VDOE's website. If you have questions about it, a warning though, the VDOE is not prepared to answer some of those questions. And that was something that very much so came up during the luncheon that when the superintendents of the different school divisions and when school board members of different divisions reached out to the VDOE, the VDOE generally said, "Refer back to the website." And that's where their questions arose. It was a deep, robust conversation about next steps and moving forward because the new accountability system is already in place. And what makes this very different and this year very different from previous years, this year, not only do we have a new accountability system, we have the Virginia Literacy Act, we also have new math standards and new English Language Arts standards. Typically, the VDOE provides school divisions across the state what's called a crosswalk year, which is a year that provides the school divisions an opportunity to transition from old standards, old requirements, to new standards slash new requirements. The VDOE did not do that this time. The VDOE- The VDOE rolled all of these out at the same time and expected school divisions to comply. As if you've heard me talk many times before, one of the issues around all of that was that funding piece. And that was a big issue, question we had for Friday, what that funding piece will look like. Because with the new accountability system, will be new requirements for school divisions to meet standards, and that's a very vague term, but standards, and what will be the dollar sign associated with those changes? So that was the bulk of our conversation. Some of the key issues are, what's the difference between mastery versus growth, graduation, the MOU, which school divisions will have to sign in accordance with the VDOE, what student supports will look like, how classes like AP classes, honors classes, and dual enrollment classes will count in the new accountability system. There are some serious concerns at school division level that the way the new accountability system will work, students will get more, more credit, or the school will get more points towards accountability for taking less rigorous classes than they're already taken. So that was a very big question. We're waiting for updates from the VDOE. We have been encouraged to talk to our legislators about this so that we can get more information about the new accountability system. We also discussed updating the WABE Guide, which is the Washington Area Boards of Education Guide. Every year, they, they come out with a new guide that's got the updated numbers, but the model that's used is very old and outdated, and there is a push to change the model that's used because the current information that's being put out through the WABE Guide is not very usable by school divisions. If you've ever tried to look at the WABE Guide to compare our division to the other divisions around us, it's very confusing because they don't use the same measures in each school division. So you're comparing not apples to apples, but apples to oranges. So there was a big push to talk about updating the WABE Guide. All in all, it was a really productive lunch. It was nice to talk to superintendents in different school divisions. It was nice to talk to school board members in different school divisions, to hear some of the same things that go on in our school division go on around the area. One thing we did talk about was, of course, cell phones and how so far, so good. Just a reminder on cell phones, though, our new cellphone policy that we'll be talking about tomorrow is not a Manassas City policy, it's based on the governor's guidance. We're following the governor's guidance. So we don't have a lot of area for wiggle room in this, we've got to follow the letter of the guidance. And finally, I just did want to share a slight sad story that's been on my mind a lot. We have a former student who, her name was Emily. She also worked at La China Poblana. She passed away recently, and it's really had an impact on many members of our school community because she was a graduate of Osborne High School. She graduated in 2020, and her loss is being felt with many groups of people in the area. She was a wonderful young lady. Some of you may remember her as a student at Osborne. A great young lady, a role model, a student volunteer, an advocate for kids, and a mentor, and her loss is being felt keenly by the children she impacted and by the adults who had the honor of knowing her. There will be a funeral mass for her Friday night at 6:00 PM at St. Leo's in Fairfax, if anyone's interested. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay. For my comments, I think we've, several people have mentioned Emma Lindenfelzer. We're very proud of her. Mrs. Williams mentioned the Community Commitment for Literacy that Dr. Newman and Mrs. Williams and I were at today. But I'm going to do a PSA that we are approaching cold and flu season, so please remember to take care of yourself and do preventable things if you can, if you choose to. And along with cold and flu season, sometimes we have some weather issues. And sometimes we even have that white stuff that comes from the sky. And I'm shocked that Mrs. Ball didn't mention this because this is her idea. So I got to give Mrs. Ball credit. There is a contest for students. Is it only for students, or can staff do it too?
It's for students.
Okay, for students. But, but staff can encourage students to create their own video announcing a snow day. And so we hope to use that in, sometime in the future, whenever it may have the fluffy wife stuff coming down. So we have information on the website and, and where?
Social media.
And on social media. So thank you. We look forward to that. I can't wait to see what these students come up with. And that's all I got tonight.
Chair, I move that the school board meeting adjourned.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries 6-0. We are adjourned. Thank you all for being here tonight.